Five, four, three, two, one. Committee on Education, Tuesday the 26th of October, 2021. Councilmember Bowman.
Present.
Councilmember Nowakowski.
Present.
Councilmember Wyatt.
Here.
Councilmember Rivera. Former's present.
Okay, good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to our education committee meeting for Buffalo Common Council. Sean, if you want to call item number one?
Sure. Item number one, Say Yes Buffalo update.
Mr. Chairman, this item is open.
Thank you. This item is open, and today we have with us Dave Rust from Say Yes Education. And Dave and I met over summer, and we just talked about a lot of good things happening and the things that Say Yes has, you know, brought to the city of Buffalo. So I thought it was prudent to bring him in and just have a little discussion. So he has a little presentation for us today. We're going to try to pull that up, and then Dave, you have the floor.
Can you hear me? Great. Thanks for having me today. Thank you for the introduction and the invitation to speak here today, Councilmember Bowman. I know many of you are familiar with our work. We do have some updates I'd like to share and some ways that we've evolved as we've entered our 10th year of work here in partnership with the Buffalo Public Schools, City of Buffalo, and Erie County. I'd like to certainly acknowledge my colleague, Will Karesti, who's behind us as well, too, for his staunch leadership of the Say Yes partnership since we launched 10 years ago. So I'll go through a deck. I don't have to spend a ton of time on everyone, and I'm happy to take any questions that you have. I think you'll see in the last couple of years how we've continued to innovate and evolve to meet the needs of students and families in this community, how we've grown, how we've stepped up and provided support opportunities, including things like the virtual learning centers over the past year or so while we were in the midst of the pandemic. And I think you'll see a commitment.
We'll get you set up with a new mic.
Okay. Is it back? Looks like it's back, yeah. Okay. So could you go to the next slide, please? Okay, so a bit about our model. It's built on three components: scholarships, which we're best known for. I think you'll see as we go through. Increased post-secondary completion rates and economic revitalization of our community. Next slide, please. A little bit on the services and supports, and I want to pause on this slide for a few moments. I think this is the real, the heart and soul of the work we do at Say Yes. You know, if you don't have proper food, proper shelter, proper clothing, if you need additional support for math and English learning, if you're the first in your family that might be going to earn a certificate, a two-year degree, a four-year degree, the promise of a college tuition actually doesn't mean all that much to you. And this is the work that we have done and are fully integrated into the Buffalo Public Schools. The column on the far left starts with our pre-K through grade 12 supports, including screenings for every student as they enter the district, where they are socially, emotionally, and academically, and then providing supports as needed. We continue to provide social service casework in the public school buildings, providing access to Tier III supports, food, clothing, shelter, working directly in the home with students and families, helping parents with job assistance if they're working three jobs across different parts of the city and aren't able to engage or able to help with one job for an oper- for a parent. You know, any barrier to educational success is the work that we try and play. That's backed by a mental and behavior health clinic in every public school building. You know, we've had great assets and supports in this commu- in this community for decades. I think the creativity here is taking things like mental health clinics and then putting them directly into a public school building so that kids are able to access them. They don't have to go to a satellite site and try and get there from a transportation perspective. It's right in their building. I'd note we've had over 700 students enroll this year already since we kicked off. The need post-pandemic is huge, and it's certainly a service area that is being well-received by the district. We've added that with health casework supports, where we, I had mentioned our DSS, Social Service caseworkers. We have a similar title for health supports. You know, given that, you know, a day like today, yesterday, two rainy days in a row, a student that have asthma is out at the bus stop waiting, right? That's going to kick in, then they may miss school for a week. You know, having health support caseworkers that can work with families on health needs so that they can ultimately stay in school is important and an important part of our portfolio. We continue to have free civil legal clinics for families dealing with immigration, housing, access to benefits, family law. We have summer camps available. The city supported these these past year and has in the past as well, too, where we had 1,400 students participating in full and half-day summer camps, students in pre-K through sixth grade, many of whom who had been out of buildings for a long period of time. You know, in full partnership with the district, we continue to run the Community Schools model and the parent centers with Saturday academies. I'd invite anybody that wants to visit one in your district, you know, come out and see. I was at Southside this past Saturday. The building was packed with academic support, enrichment, health and wellness programming, arts, just a terrific model to engage families directly in public school buildings. And, you know, we, I won't get into the data for each of these, but once a student shows up to a Saturday academy three times, we've seen increases in academic scores and school attendance, so proving to make a difference from the investment. You can also see all of our pre-college and college programs remain in place. I'll spend a little bit less time on these, but you'll note that we do have our fast-foot completion for students, our college scholarships. I'll talk more about this shortly. A comprehensive Boys and Men of Color initiative, which goes under the name Breaking Barriers. We've added some components, which I'm going to talk a little bit more about, apprenticeship in addition to continuing our mentoring and internship programs, so good comprehensive supports. On the next slide, you'll see a bit about how these have translated to college campuses as well. You know, we learned some lessons in our earlier years, that just because a student completes high school doesn't mean that the challenges for transportation, for food, to access to extra supports goes away, and in fact, in some cases, they need it more. So around four years ago, we earned the first direct bill in Melinda Gates Foundation grant ever given to this community. It was $3.6 million, shared equally with the Buffalo Public Schools, Madai College, Villa Maria College, the University at Buffalo, SUNY Erie, and Buffalo State College. The goal for this was persistence, that putting, taking all the supports we've embedded in the Buffalo Public Schools and dropping them onto those campuses. We chose those five because those five schools represent 70% of Say Yes Buffalo scholars. These are the places they're going. There's mental health clinics on those campuses, there's Say Yes Success counselors. So if I come in and see Councilmember Wyatt saying, you know, I'm struggling with food, transportation, and, you know, math is really hard for me, you can link me with the bus pass, the access to the food pantry on campus, and help me push into certain academic support so that I can do a little bit better in math or English. The investment has shown a return, as persistence rates went up at three of the four campuses in the first year, and it's looking like all four in the second. So again, good investments in our students so that ultimately they can graduate and live and work in this community. Next slide, please. I'll talk a little bit here about how we've evolved. You know, our history is we started scholarship, we added on the blue piece of the puzzle on the far left, which was those pre-K through 12th grade supports in the public schools. The Gates Foundation grant seeded those pink supports, the post-secondary campus supports I just talked on, and yellow is where we're going, and that's workforce development. I would say, I don't think we're a silver bullet for anything. I would say the need is huge in our community, but we feel we can play a greater role in workforce access, given our unique positioning. You know, we sit at the intersection of a K-12 system, higher ed access, and private sector employment. You know, private sector employment has funded our scholarship fund and endowment, and those businesses want our talent. I say, in our city, everybody has potential, not everybody has been given opportunity, and we view our role in the workforce as opening doors around opportunity. This can often be a town where it's who you know, and we can play a role there because we know our investors. So this is an example of what workforce development and action looks like. Couple data points entering this: any given year, around 70% of Buffalo Public School graduates will take advantage of the Say Yes scholarship. We view higher ed broadly, that's a certificate, a two-year degree or a four-year degree. A saying from the president of Madai College, Dr. Maker, which has really stuck with me is that free college is still too expensive for some students in our city. We are supporting this year 2,500 students with a higher ed scholarship opportunity. 60% have combined family income below $20,000. I know these data points won't surprise you, but families are making hard choices, students are making hard choices between work and higher ed access. This is an earn while you learn, traditional apprentice model designed to help students make money while they're earning a certificate and potentially a four-year degree that will culminate in a job on the backend. So at Wegmans, who has done this best in class, you know, a nationally recognized employer, students would graduate, and they will start working at Wegmans 20 hours a week the first year, moving up to 30 and 40 hours. While they are working there, they will be earning a certificate. In this case, it would be a certificate in business operations that would lead to the title of team leader or customer service at Wegmans, and that salary on the backend starts at $45,000, $50,000, $55,000. So you're moving into a mid-skill, mid-wage opportunity quickly while you're earning money through a structured apprenticeship model. You'll see on the next slide the other employers that have signed up for the first round: MNT Bank, Keybank, Riches, Moog, Lighthouse Technologies, Tesla, and Harmic. And we've identified these three verticals that have a number of open jobs in our community, one being advanced manufacturing. You can see the titles below it. Second being business operations, and third being information technology. With this, we have hired a new title at Say Yes Buffalo, a career coach. We've hired three career coaches that will be working in six Buffalo Public Schools to start to recruit for this new model. We've cracked 100 employees at Say Yes Buffalo, 70% of whom are colleagues of color from senior leadership throughout our organization. We're growing, you know, and we're going to grow in other ways, too. But we feel that this is the next real step for us to take in workforce. And again, it complements all the other work happening in this community, but it's the right role for us to play, in particular, given the wage and skill gaps you see coming. You know, this community is calling for 165,000 open jobs in the next decade, with two-thirds requiring a post-secondary credential. This is a way we can really make an impact, and most importantly, not just complete a higher ed degree, but earn a good job on the backend. Next slide, please. I won't spend too much time on these next two to three slides. It's intuitive, and you've seen this before, but long and short, you know, it's, this is, whether you look at Say Yes from a social lens or an economic lens, it makes sense for this community, and these are some of the data points behind the reasoning for that. Next slide, please. So, you know, a couple data points I wanted to share. You know, we feel investments in Say Yes, and I'll talk about the huge investments the city have made, need to be earned. We need to continue to deliver on those. Here's some early data points. I would note, in no way do we take credit for this. This was done with the public schools, with the city, with the county, with philanthropy, with union leadership, with higher ed. But the high school graduation rate is up significantly, post-secondary access is up significantly, post-secondary completion is up. We have over 2,000 students that have graduated with a Say Yes degree and certificate. These are six examples of those students, many of whom are working and living in this community now. And on the next slide, I mean, you'll quickly see the economic return for this, too. So Say Yes continues to provide measurable impact for students and families in our city. You know, putting this in context, you know, completion, post-secondary completion is up significantly compared to both the city, I'm sorry, the state and the rest of the country right now. I'd anticipate we're going to see some fluctuation in our data in the next few years. I'm open about that. You know, in the past year, we've had a few less students enroll in the Say Yes scholarship, given that many of them had to work. You know, we are going to go back and offer those students this earn while you learn model that I touched on, as we feel it's a good entry back to the workforce. But the data we have to date continues to show a real return on the investment that this community has made in Say Yes Buffalo. You can see here the types of degrees our students are earning, you know, about half bachelors, 43% associates, and the smallest pool right now is certificates to date, the types of degrees that our students are earning. Most of our students are graduating from Say Yes institutions. As a reminder, Say Yes Buffalo scholars can enter any SUNY or CUNY school in New York State and over 100 private colleges around the country that we've entered into agreements with. That includes every Ivy League institution, other highly competitive schools like Duke and Georgetown and Notre Dame, strong regional schools like Syracuse, RIT, and the U of R, and all of our great local private colleges like Villa Maria and Madai. Our scholarship continues to be largely fueled by private sector. Couple reminders, you know, we earned a $25 million challenge gift. It was anonymous and the sixth largest in the history of this region three years ago. The goal was that for every $3 we raise up to 75 million, this individual will kick in a dollar up to 25 million so that the scholarship is endowed and we don't have to continue to fundraise for it in perpetuity. In addition to that challenge investment, we've raised $25 million to date, 15 coming from foundations, individuals, and businesses, 10 coming from New York State. So we're in the midst of this campaign. We have a little under three years to continue to raise the rest of the resources. We did take the pandemic year off from fundraising. We felt it was really important this community focus on basic needs and providing PPE and other safety and health supports in this community. We felt it was important. We focus on things like our services and getting the virtual learning centers up and running during that point in time in partnership with the county and the public schools, but we are fundraising for our endowment again and have had a successful year to date for that. Next slide, please. You know, I'd like to note in close, I firmly believe that our theory of change, which is built around education access and job access, can't be tackled alone. You know, we believe that we're a bridge builder, a convener, a facilitator, and that all these tech problems are best tackled in partnership with those in our community. So on the next slide, I'd like to note the role that the city has played in our Leadership Council. We convene this Leadership Council three times a year publicly, once privately. We will have our next convening in January over a lunch. We are going to do that live. It'll be our first Leadership Council back live. I'd like to thank the mayor for chairing this, along with Regent Collins, School Board President Petrucci, the Chair of our Scholarship Board, our Board of Directors, Bill Joyce, Senator Kennedy, the Majority Leader, and the Deputy County Executive. The role in advocacy and visibility is really important to us, to show we are working together. On the next slide, we have an advisory body called an Operating Committee, which continues to meet every three weeks. We met for the first eight years at a public high school. We now meet at Villa Maria College, and we'll rotate that every year, every other year. The city role in advocacy and leadership here has been held by the Deputy Mayor, Dr. Grant. You'll also see we meet every three weeks with a couple of foundation leads. We have a student representative, Emmanuel Wright, who's a student at Villa Maria College, the recognized parent bodies, four college presidents, union leadership is at the table with us, the Commissioner of Social Services, the Superintendent's Office, all meeting every three weeks with our common goals of more high school graduates, more post-secondary graduates, and now moving into workforce. I'd be remiss if I didn't acknowledge the investment the city has made in us. Again, I feel it's an earned investment, but not one that we feel entitled to. We will continue to deliver. But the city has contributed $500,000 annually that allows us to hire the social service caseworkers titled Family Support Specialists that work directly in the school, just as important, directly in the home. These are mandated services. We were in the home the whole pandemic, working with families. That helps also leverage an additional $800,000 in federal and state funding through the county to employ our caseworkers to work in the public school buildings. Again, I noted the data points on our team there. We work hard to be an inclusive employer, and it shows in the data. It's something we take very serious. The city has also supported us with investments in summer camp. They did this past year. They were more important than ever, given the time out of school. The mayor has served as a Chair of our Leadership Council, and the mayor has delegated a senior team member to the Operating Committee, which I mentioned. And I think just as important, I'd like to thank the Common Council for advocacy as well, too, as, you know, the city serving as an ambassador for this coalition building. It's important that we work together on this, and I know each of you here today and your colleagues have as well, to improve high school and post-secondary completion rates. I can pause here. It's the gist of my, my presentation today. Again, I would close before moving to Q and A, that we're thankful for the investment. We're moving to the east side of the city. We'll be in June 3rd onto Jefferson Avenue between Northland and Southland. It's a long-term home for our organization. You know, we've grown, and we're going to be here, and we're grateful for your support and allowing us to be here, and we're happy to relocate to the east side of the city. I think it's a signature investment for us, bringing a nice thing to Jefferson Avenue. So I'll pause there, and again, any questions you have, I'm happy to take them.
Great. Thank you very much, Dave. Colleagues, any questions or comments? Yeah. Councilmember Wyatt.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And David, thank you for the outstanding work that you do for Say Yes. I think it shows from this presentation significant impact, and I think it's critically important. You know, I've been on this thing about the city of Buffalo being the third poorest in the country of our size, and what are we doing to make that change? And I think that the work that you do is positive, and it can make that change. I wanted to go over a couple of things and just kind of restate to make sure I heard this. 60% of the students receiving scholarships, their families have a median income of less than $20,000. Did you say that?
Correct, sir.
Wow. That's an amazing number. You know, how do you survive on $20,000? But thank for Say Yes, that individuals, young people who want to go to college, that's a desire, they're able to do that. I know initially, when you had the list of colleges, there weren't HBCUs, but now I know that you do have HBU fund individuals who are going to HBCUs.
Yes, sir. We have about five HBCUs in our compact, and we're looking to add additional HBCUs at this point in time. So, you know, we took the feedback from the community and worked to grow the number of HBCUs that Buffalo students can attend.
What is, what is the process of getting on that list? Is it something that you work with the institution?
We work directly with the institution. We sign agreements for them. The agreements are for Say Yes students in Buffalo, Syracuse, Cleveland, and Guilford County, Ohio, so our four Say Yes communities. That work is now managed out of Buffalo, so we look for entry points. We work directly with the institution. The commitment is that a student with combined family income under $75,000, which is 87% of city residents, that tuition is waived after Pell and TAP, or Pell and institutional aid. Above $75,000, we offer that institution the equivalent of a SUNY tuition, so about $5,000 per year while that student is enrolled in school. So that's how the schools are. We go down, we talk to them, and ask, we ask them to sign up for that.
Okay. As far as, because I know a lot of residents constantly ask me, what is the requirement for individuals to achieve Say Yes scholarship funding? Because some of them have come from other schools, they haven't all been in the Buffalo school system the entire term. Can you just explain that a little bit? Talk about that?
Yeah, so the parameters are a minimum of grades nine through 12 in a Buffalo public or charter school, living in the city, graduating, and then completing Pell and TAP on an annual basis. Those are the four structured requirements to apply for Say Yes. We fund tuition. The tuition is guaranteed. You'll see in January, I can't roll up, provide all the details here, but we are starting to do more for students with the most economic need in terms of books and fees, and we'll be rolling that out citywide by January of 2022. So right now, it's tuition, and then it's going to be more for families with additional economic need. There's a couple, we do have an appeals process for somebody who may fall outside those parameters, but we automatically waive students that have been in the child welfare system, that are in foster care, that may have had to, you know, move with their aunt or uncle or grandparent in chikwaga for a year because of a child welfare situation. For immigrants and refugees, we waive that as well, too. We also have really loosened our guidelines around COVID so that students aren't hurt for the bylaws that we operate. I would just note it's very student-friendly. And, you know, every single case for those 2,500 students is different, so broadly, 90% immediately are eligible. When you add our waivers, it gets up to 95, 97, and then we'll deal with the rest on an appeal basis.
Okay. So you don't have to be a student in Buffalo from kindergarten till 12th grade to receive 100% for Say Yes scholarships?
So the scholarship is a bit layered and structured. The minimum is nine through 12. If you've been in the district nine through 12, and you attend one of those private schools, your tuition is covered. If you've been in a district less than that, we tier it, starting with kindergarten at 100% and every three grade bands. There's a slight reduction in eligibility for students that are attending a SUNY or CUNY school.
Okay. I noticed on your criteria of the students that you help, you have K through 12. Does that include pre-K?
The bulk of our services are eligible for pre-K. That's also an area of expansion we're working on with the Buffalo Public Schools. We do screen students right now using a tool called the Ages and Stages Questionnaire as students enter pre-K and kindergarten for the district. We then hand that data off to the district teachers and administrators. Pre-K students are eligible for summer camp. They're also eligible for Say Yes services in the building, such as health supports, social service supports, mental health supports, the extended learning time options.
Okay. Well, that, because I know President Biden is looking to expand pre-K so that his student, his children that are three and up for pre-K, is that something that Say Yes will be adopting and utilizing as well as the pre-K itself?
Yeah, you'll hear from the district and us in the coming months about the opportunity to add three-year-old classrooms in some of the Buffalo Public Schools.
Okay.
We've been paying close attention to the policy, both on the 3Y end and higher ed. You know, there was also on the table a free community college proposal that looks like it's not going to go through.
Yeah.
That was removed, but, you know, we want to pay attention to what's going on at the federal level, but fully agree that the earlier we start our students, the better, the earlier we start them in our schools, the better, especially those that have siblings. We view it as a prime opportunity.
Now, I know that you said you're going to be, you're going to be moving, or you are, have already moved to your location on Jefferson?
June 3rd, we're.
June 3rd.
So about eight months, seven months, whatever is left there.
Now, are you offering services, or is that just your administrative office there?
It's our administrative office. Most of our services are embedded directly in public schools or on college campuses. We do have drop-in hours for scholarship access if somebody needs help with Fast Fire or TAP or wants to talk through that. We host things like our Say Yes Ambassador programs in our office as well, too. It's a bigger space than we currently have, but again, our, I view us as community forward-facing, and for us, that means it's best for us to be in schools delivering services.
Okay. Well, thank you so much again for your outstanding leadership in this. I think that this is what we're talking about, when we're talking about making a difference and decreasing and getting rid of that, that third-awake city in the country. These are the type of things that we must do if we're going to change that. So again, thank you for your service.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Rust. I hope you'll keep us updated. You know, we'll table this, and you can keep us updated on any new programs, but I'm really happy to see the work that you're doing. I really like personally the support services you're providing, the workforce development and training. All those things are great to see, so I just wanted to give an opportunity to highlight this and, you know, show some good things that are going on.
Motion is to table.
Motion to table, seconded by Councilmember Wyatt.
Takes items from the table five and 10.
Motion to take items number five and 10 off the table.
Number five is open.
Item number five, halal lunch options in Buffalo Public Schools. Okay, this is our halal food item, which the program has started this, this school year. So we'll have Dr. Karesti's come give us an item on, update on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and esteemed Common Council members. I definitely want to extend appreciation to you, Mr. Chairman, for inviting David Rust to give you that overview of the partnership. I think it's easy to see why. Say Yes is our key strategic partner in the Buffalo Public Schools, and we are now a decade into this partnership. None of us who have been around over the years can imagine the Buffalo Public Schools not being a Say Yes district, and David is very modest. He mentioned some of the other Say Yes cities. We've checked. We've checked with our colleagues on the Council of Great City Schools who don't have a Say Yes partner, but they have other strategic partners. There is no embedded strategic partnership like this, where a private partner is fully integrated into the workings of the public school district. So I want to give credit to you, David, for the remarkable work you've done over 10 years, and it has made, and as you know, it has made an incredible impact on the life of our students, our staff, and our families. So we're really appreciative of this partnership, and it's something that's going to be here forever. That's what we know about Say Yes now. So we're very excited about that. And David, just want to give you another shout-out, and thank you for all the great work that you do. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for having us. Just give you some quick updates. I'm going to start with reopening today. It can certainly take any questions on that, but I want to focus on transportation and give you some information on that. You know that we're working very closely with First Student to really try to attract drivers to the profession. We therefore are committed to increasing the signing bonus to $5,000, up from three, and we think that that's going to have some impact over the long haul. First Student has processed employment applications and extended contingent job offers to over 300 drivers since the end of the summer. But remember, the process to onboard these drivers and actually place them in a bus could take up to 10 weeks. And in the course of that 10 weeks, where new drivers are coming onboard and working with the district, we'll lose drivers just through ordinary attrition. So this is a challenge that will certainly be with us throughout the entire school year. There's no doubt about that. We're appreciative of Governor Hochul's office. They provided us with a list of about 280 CDL licensed individuals around Western New York who may be interested in applying. And while the yield for that has only been 29 applications, that's 29 applications that wouldn't have come without that extraordinary help from the governor's office. So we really appreciate everything that she and her, her staff have done to help support us. And we're in ongoing conversations all the time to try to brainstorm other ideas. With that in mind, understand that we are still short 100 to 125 drivers as a result of this shortage, this national driver shortage at any given time compared to our pre-COVID numbers. The superintendent's task force on transportation is troubleshooting some new recommendations that are coming to us that are particularly geared towards the issue of the weather changes that we're now going to be facing and also the time change, which makes it darker a lot earlier. So that's my update for you, Mr. Chairman and, and council members. Let me, however, just make one final point, and that is, want to give you all of the assurance that we possibly can, that we are working diligently every single day to try to address the driver shortage and also brainstorm how we can be more strategic around the transportation system itself. I want to give credit to Cheryl Kennedy, our Director of Transportation, and First Student. They've, they've done an admirable job, an impressive job of always trying to stay ahead. And I also want to remind you that unlike some other large districts across New York State and across the country, we're fully open and our intention is to stay fully open. So we will continue to address this challenge. We will try to make progress with it every week, and I will make sure to give this committee regular updates as the year goes on.
I just, I couldn't hear you, but can you clarify that 300 number? You said you have potentially, I know you said it takes 10 weeks to process, but what was that 300 number?
Right. So from all the applications that have come in, I thought there were maybe 600-plus applications that have come in since the summer. 300 of those applicants made it through that initial screening process and were offered what's called contingent job offers. And that means it's contingent on all of the eligibility requirements that exist at the state level for licensure, and then all of the state and federal requirements that First Student has to implement for you to become a bus driver. So these job offers are basically an opportunity for First Student to tell these potential employees, you're in if you go through the entire process and stay with us for the training. It can be less than 10 weeks, but it could take up to 10 weeks because the employee candidate still has to produce, you know, information. They have to get a health clearance. They have to do a number of things that could take a little more time depending on their circumstances.
Got it. Colleagues, any questions? Councilmember Wyatt?
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chair. Dr. Karestis, I know that, thank you for the update. I, I know that there's been criticisms because we, we, it was said that, and I don't know for a fact, that we were aware of this, the driver shortage. What happened that we didn't get ahead of this, that we were not kind of trying to get this done when we probably should have been doing something several months ago?
Right. Well, we were. So as soon as we became aware of the fact that people were not returning to work, as we were ramping up last spring, contemplating a full reopening or planning for a full reopening in September, we did exactly what we're doing right now, which is to make sure there's no stone left unturned with regard to recruiting candidates. We bumped up the signing bonus all the way up to 3,000. Like I said, it's now up to 5,000. So everything that could humanly be done to attract candidates to take these jobs, to get them through as quickly as we could, we started doing right away. So there was never a time in which the district was not responsive to the challenge. Now, I understand why people might think that, because it's hard to believe that it can be so hard to get vacant positions filled. We're wired to always think, people are always looking for jobs, and if you put postings up, people will apply for these jobs and you'll be able to fill up your ranks. But that's just not the case with these positions. Being a bus driver is a very challenging job. People who were in this business in the past, as a result of the COVID closure, went into other professions. They're not necessarily coming back. So that's really what plagued us with the challenges at the beginning. So it wasn't for lack of trying. What you'll see nationally is that the candidates are just not there. There is not an interest to fill out these positions. It's happening in small districts. It's happening in medium-sized districts like Niagara Falls. They're now trying to compress their instructional schedule in the course of the day. You may have seen that in the news to try to figure out, how do we get kids home sooner because of the driver shortage? But I can assure you, we are not going to rest. We are going to be on this every single day. We understand the frustration of parents and civic leaders, and we will continue working until everyone is satisfied.
Okay. One of the things that I've observed, and maybe I'm paying more closer attention because of the whole issue with the cameras and that, but it seems to me that some of the buses are speeding. And I know that's not the district's issue, but that's what my perception is. So I'm wondering, are the people they're hiring just as qualified as the people they had before? I mean, because it really seems to me, it's something I'm noticing even more, but that I'd never noticed before. Because I, I want to say that when I'm paying attention to a bus, I'm really watching, is this driver responsible? And for the most part, before, recently, I always saw bus drivers as being very responsible, but it seems as though that that's a problem.
Right. They most certainly should not be speeding. My suggestion would be if there's any way any of us see that, if there's any number that you can get off of that bus, whatever your eye catches, and if there's a way, you know, I know you have my, my number, my direct number, you could text it to me, that would be helpful because we've got to make sure that, not only that they're following the law, but that they're safe. You know, they're safe drivers for our children and anyone that's speeding is not a safe driver. So thank you for that.
Well, well, now we have our speed readers in some locations around the schools so we can see and we can gauge that, but yeah. But again, thank you for the update and if you can keep us updated on this, because I know this is an issue for many parents in my district. We all in, all in this together and we're trying to do the best we can and whatever we can do to assist, I definitely would like to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Dr. Karestis, for being here. I just have a few questions when it comes to the transportation. And what is, what are the salaries or the starting salaries of school bus drivers?
Um, I believe that they begin at $19.95 per hour. I'm going to have to double check that and get back to you. And then it does rise fairly quickly, is my understanding, but I can, I can get that information to you.
Thank you. And are they full-time jobs or part-time jobs or?
These days, they're becoming more and more full-time jobs because of the length of hours that folks are putting in, but it is an hourly paid position. But let me get that information to you about salaries and hours.
Yeah, I appreciate that, because, you know, I know certainly when I grew, was growing up and my, you know, soon-to-be, you know, father-in-law is, is retired and is a, is a bus driver, but it usually, folks were, you know, more, you know, retired age that were school bus drivers. But I think now the demand is that these drivers be full-time and instead of being hourly, maybe, you know, have, you know, a wage that reflects the, the duty and the importance of them might help solicit better candidates.
Something you said triggers a memory that I had. We were at First Student for a press conference with Congressman Higgins on green buses and all of that. But afterwards, we had just a meeting with some bus supervisors and they, they encouraged us to come back at night sometime. When the drivers are finishing their runs, many of them are coming back and they're asking, is there anything else that needs to be done? These drivers are really heroic. They're actually asking at 5:00, 6:00, 7:00 o'clock, is there some child out there or some school that had a bus that didn't show or whatever the crisis is? Where can I go to be deployed? So it just, I want to give credit to these incredible drivers that we have. But to your point, yeah, we're always looking at salaries and trying to make sure that we're at the top of the competitive edge with that. But I'll get that information to the whole council.
Thank you.
Majority Leader Rivera.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kresty. Obviously, you know, we pay attention to what's happening both locally and nationally with regards to transportation. And I didn't realize how bad it was until I started to watch Cable News Network and see that the bottleneck that's happening right now in the supply chain is because of transportation or lack of transportation, truck drivers across the United States. And now we're seeing this here in the city of Buffalo. And I think this is just convergence of a lot of things that have occurred, the pandemic, unemployment, insurance, and people moving on to other positions. You mentioned the amount of pay that the bus drivers get. I added it up, full-time, it would come out to about $41,000. That's full-time, and most of those bus drivers aren't working full-time. They're like almost teacher assistants. They're part-time workers. And it's hard to compete with other opportunities that are out there for these bus drivers. And I think that's probably one of the problems you're having, is there's opportunities for them elsewhere. If I was looking to work, I probably want to be a truck driver. I'm listening to the radio and Walmart is advertising to pay people $80,000 to deliver, to deliver for them. $80,000 versus, you know, perhaps $41,000. So I think the incentive might be, though you give a $5,000 incentive to sign up, it's a one-time incentive, then it goes back to whatever they make in terms of salaries. It is a problem. I don't know when it's going to come back to normal, to resemble what it used to be. When do you see this kind of leveling off? Because right now, you're, you're, you're seeking these bus drivers and looking out using the process that you, you're using right now. When do you see this leveling up, returning back to what is normal?
You know what? Thank you, Councilmember Rivera, for your very important question. When it was last spring and we were contemplating this, a full September reopening, we knew that we would have an impact because we were planning for it back then. But we were optimistic that maybe by January, enough people would be returning to the workforce who were bus drivers, that they would want their positions back. We didn't see that in the same numbers. We then began to think, people generally who have been, you know, who have been phased out of whatever line of employment they had during COVID will now be looking for a new opportunity, and they may be interested in becoming bus drivers if we incentivize it enough. That has happened to a certain extent, but nowhere near quick enough to impact this school year. So it will at least be this school year, and we are now already beginning to brainstorm how we can implement certain strategies around transportation so that next year feels different for parents than it feels now. But our Director of Transportation was very clear the other night with our board. We, we no longer see that this school year really will be dramatically improved from where we are now. So there are steps we're going to have to take to get kids home earlier. We're looking at all sorts of options on that. And the superintendent has, has, you know, directed the task force to really begin to think much more broadly based on research and what's going on in any district that's having any kind of success. But the long and short of your, your question is, it's not going to change this year, and we, we're, we're taking steps now to try to mitigate the impact on next September. And you're not going to hear anything too different from districts our size across the country. You have to get down to districts, large districts around the size of like a North Tonawanda or Niagara Falls. They may be able to recruit, you know, the smaller number of drivers that they need to close their gap by next September. But a large district that needs 100 drivers to get any sense of normalcy, that's going to be a challenge that's going to take more than one year.
And how many vacancies do you have right now?
Well, the, the number that we're going for is that 100 to 125. That's, that's the number that we need to close the gap in our district. So vacancies are occurring all the time, just as new hires are coming in. So that's why it's getting, it remains a challenge to close that gap. It's a very, that 100 is a very stubborn number right now, because we may be onboarding and getting ready to inaugurate 30 drivers during the month of November, and by the end of November, we would have lost 25 drivers or 22 drivers.
Sure, through attrition.
And, and in a group that's, you know, 400 drivers strong, that's a pretty typical attrition rate, really, in any industry. When people hear how large our system actually is, they're sometimes impressed, oh, you only lost 25, you only lost 30. But that trickle of losing drivers while we're getting the trickle of those that are getting on-boarded is the thing that has created an intractable challenge for us this year. And that's why that gap isn't closing as quickly as we want it to.
The vacancies, is it due to retirements or the problem retaining them? Is it mostly they're moving on to other jobs or is it that they're retiring?
I think it's a mix. It's not mostly one or the other. It's, it's a mix and it probably fluctuates what the, what the cause is from month to month.
Yeah. Well, that-
We are hearing that fatigue is, excuse me, I'm sorry to interrupt.
Sure, no problem.
We are hearing that fatigue is one of the reasons for some of the drivers leaving.
Sure. Well, I mean, that is a concern, the retention, people that are leaving because of the things you mentioned, the stress, versus they're, they put in their time and they're retiring. So, I mean, obviously retention, if you're going to lose people with the retention and because there's a lack of interest for the position for other reasons, maybe economic reasons, certainly you have a lot of work ahead of you in trying to retain the ones that you have, at the same time, bring on new people when you're competing with other people that are interested in hiring people for transportation. Because if I had a choice right now, you know, I probably want to be a truck driver, you know, out in California. There's so much work. I mean, they're looking for truck drivers and they're advertising on the radio and they're starting at 80,000 plus, and here we are paying them part-time work, $19.95 an hour. It's going to be hard to retain people at, at that level. And I don't know what else we can do to incentivize them to bring, not just, we don't just want to bring bus drivers, but we want to make sure that kids are safe. Most importantly, that you want bus drivers that take pride in the work they do and they're well-trained to take care of the kids. That's very important as well. But I agree, the retention part of it is going to be up to the Board of Education, obviously, and, and how you work to retain the bus drivers you have and incentivize other people to want to come and work for the school district. So, I mean, well, I'm sure we'll hear more from you in this committee at some point. So looking forward to an update sometime in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Rivera. And I'm glad the point was brought up by Councilmember Wyatt about the speeding, because I do have some issues. It was brought up at our Block Club Academy, St. Mary's, that, you know, they're having some issues. So I'll get you some bus numbers that they, they've been writing down. Just quickly, I wanted to ask, are we having issues with crossing guards? And then, like, having crossing guards? I noticed some of my schools in my district, or I might be missing them, but I'm not seeing crossing guards as much. I know School 69 has them, but are we having issues in finding crossing guards?
Yes. The BPD reported to me that as of September, there were at least six to eight vacancies, which is really substantial for, for us. Because remember, they're, they're only at the elementary sites. So if you've, if you're down six to eight people and you don't have substitutes, which the BPD, I think, has kind of struggled with, how do we cover vacancies? That means some posts are going to go uncovered entirely. We also have asked for BPD to consider a crossing guard or two now downtown, because we have four high schools that are now converging, the two culinary schools, Hutch Tech and Buffalo Prep, or Buffalo Science Charter, converging downtown, crossing the street. It was a serious issue when there was all that sidewalk construction going on, but we still think we need a crossing guard there or two, and we've been advocating for that. Right now, what principals do is if- Right now, what principals do is if a crossing guard doesn't show up, they call 911. Most of the time, I do believe that the precinct or the district is, the police district is responsive and they'll send a car out to do the crossing, but sometimes they can't because they're, you know, folks are on a call. So this continues to be a challenge. And I've been working with Lieutenant Losi, who is the BPD lead for crossing guards. But it does continue to be an issue. And I'm not sure if there's a continued shortage of candidates for these positions, exactly what it is, but this year has been a little worse than in, than pre-COVID.
Thank you. And then we actually opened up the halal food item. So if you just want to-
Great, thank you.
-go on with that one and then we'll table the other item.
So we're very excited about our eight pilot schools. They're fully launched with halal menus and parents responded wonderfully to our surveys. And we have a system up and running, which I think we all agreed back when Councilmember Noakowski and Chairman Bowman kind of brainstormed this approach to the district serving halal foods. You know, let's, let's kind of take it to the next level. And we are very appreciative of your advocacy for that. So system's in place, schools have responded very well, staff has turned it around and it's kind of become second nature. What we're challenged by are some supply chain issues with foods that we wanted so that there would always be parity between the non-halal foods and the halal-certified foods. In other words, if students are having, if non-halal students are having a beef entree of some kind, we want there to be a similar beef entree, not just meatballs, for example, for our halal-certified requests. So we're working on that. Right now, it's a lot of chicken, it's falafel, it's vegetarian, it's fish, and it's, it's meatballs because the supply chain is just not what we wanted it to be. Now, with that said, we have the eight pilot schools and they're operating with a distinct halal menu five days a week. It's generated a lot of excitement in the non-pilot schools because cook managers are now doing what comes natural for them. They're leading, right? So they're hearing about this, families are hearing about it and they're like, well, what about us? So, which is of course exactly what we wanted to happen, right? So now the non-pilot schools are trying to come up with more options, if not halal-certified, but, you know, the falafel, the vegetarian, the more fish options, those types of things, which satisfy some of the need. But, so we're excited about that, just the success of the campaign itself. We do expect now to be district-wide by next year with full options. I have asked the team to start looking at lamb options and a variety of beef products so that it's not just the same beef product week after week, a variety of beef products, along with all of the chicken, the variety in the chicken that gets offered. With the lamb, what I've heard is, you know, there'll be an opportunity for companies to maybe get set up, that they'll expand and that they'll diversify and add this. It is difficult for companies, even at the national level, to meet the federal standards, but we're hoping as more and more districts embrace these types of offerings that we'll find that. So it's been a great start, system-wise, but we are now trying to overcome just supply chain challenges that have not given us that parity that we wanted right out of the gate in September.
Thank you, Doctor. I really appreciate it. And I'm grateful how you approached this with such an open mind throughout the whole process and then hit the ground running. It's exciting to hear it's district-wide. Councilmember Noakowski.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I just want to echo those sentiments that this is exactly kind of how we all, when we run that Zoom way back when of how we wanted to do it. We wanted to drum up the excitement. We wanted to see parents excited about it and students and, you know, naturally that other schools want to join in too, which is really awesome. And, you know, as we can just continue to keep us abreast of this as we move forward and, you know, look forward to next year being, you know, district-wide. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Very good. Motion to table?
A motion to table.
Motion to table, second by Councilmember Wyatt. Yeah. Okay, yeah. If you could call, will you just table it? You can call number 10. Okay, this is the update that Doctor just gave us. So if we could just motion to table? Second by Councilmember Wyatt. Major.
Motion to adjourn.
Second by Councilmember Wyatt.
I'm getting used to a majority leader.
Thank you, everyone.